Nobody told me nothing.
She had to leave the work. She left the work, she didn't let the patient.
That was my question.
Maybe that's killed her in the city.
It's cool.
She felt like she was being put inside.
Well, I hope she told her manager that.
I think she did, but she won't. But she wanted to leave on good terms.
Sure.
Are we ready? This is it tonight.
Mm-hmm.
I'm with you, I've got 12 percent.
Is he gonna start sitting up here?
Yes, I moved him up here. So I can keep a closer eye on him and make him move.
I'll just take a request.
You could've sat right here.
That would've been much more fun.
He can't come that close.
Yeah.
Are you ready for us? All right.
Okay.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call our meeting to order. First item up on our agenda is to approve the agenda. Does anybody have any additions or deletions for the agenda tonight? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on, we'll move to our consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to our financial report with Mr. Ray.
All right, everybody should have in their board packets the December and the January 2020 financial statements. Really, the January encompasses December, so the seven-month period is consistent with the seven-month period from the prior year. There's no items that I really need to point out to you. All the collections are coming in as we expect, and our expenditures are occurring as we kind of budgeted. We do have some payments for the architect and some other fees regarding our addition that will be included in a budget amendment to hopefully next board meeting for you. So we'll incorporate that project into a budget amendment. But I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on the financial statements.
Any questions for Mr. Ray regarding financial statements for December and January? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve December and January's financial statements as presented in Appendix B.
So moved.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? Kim, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Can I go ask you?
Yes.
Yes.
Curtis Isbell?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to our internal school funds audit.
Everybody should have a hard copy of the small bound report, and this is your June 30th, 2019 fiscal year-end for your internal school funds. That's the money that is used at the school level to manage the finances at the school level. What I've included in there is a one-page, front and back, little summary page, and we'll start with that. The first is a letter from the auditor that is in your packet, and I know everyone will go home and read this in its entirety.
I can't wait.
But in case you're just eager to get the highlights, I've got those for you. Items number one through three, and it says "letters from the auditor." So real quick, responsibility of the auditor and management. The auditor audits the financial statements. I prepare the financial statements. That's their job. Their job isn't to produce this document, that's my job. They take those numbers and they audit those numbers. I am responsible for following the Internal Accounting Manual that's produced and regulated by the State Department of Education, and they test our compliance with that manual. There's a heading in there with "Significant Accounting Policies." There's been no changes in how we deal with things from year to year. It says, it talks about estimates and gives a lot of information about estimates, which we don't use. We don't estimate depreciation, we don't have any assets to depreciate, we don't have any payables. So that doesn't apply. They call it the modified accrual basis, but really, it's cash basis. If we get the money, we recognize that as revenue. If we write a check and spend money, we recognize that as an expense. At the end of the year, we do not have any payables. Everything's been paid. And we're not expecting any revenues that just are in the mail, so to speak. We did have three findings. One of the findings surrounds timely deposits. I call it the three-day rule. Officially, we have to follow the three-day rule in order to be in compliance. Unofficially, life happens, snow days, people get sick. No system is perfect, and if it is perfect, they've faked it. The second two surround purchase orders. Sales tax paid or reimbursed. Officially, we're not supposed to pay sales tax. As a former teacher, if I spend my money at Walmart on a sale, because it's a one-day sale, and I pay a little bit of sales tax, don't punish me by not reimbursing me that sales tax. I spent my time, I got some supplies, I'm using them in my class. Officially, we can't do that.
What we run into now is that so many stores are becoming so difficult with the tax-free that sometimes you just encounter, and they are not going to give it to you. And we encountered that at Sam's the other day when we were trying to buy some stuff for a school, and we were just caught in a situation where we needed it, and so, I mean, you gotta get what you gotta get. We run into sometimes if they attempt to get the sales tax removed, and the businesses are not quite cooperating with that. And I think it's because their auditors are coming down on them, so.
So our official stance is we will not reimburse sales tax. Staff signatures of receipt and approval. When a staff requests an item to purchase, they need to just sign the shipping document that says they got it. It's what they ordered, it's in their class, they sign off, then it gets paid. Simple as that. Purchase orders should be issued for any expenditure that exceeds $100. What was happening is, on a Saturday, if I went to Walmart and School Supply Depot, now individually, it's less than $100, but collectively, it was more than $100. They're saying, "I need a purchase order." Officially, they're correct, we should do that. We've never had an issue where a teacher's bought something and there were not funds available to make the reimbursement, and that's 90% of the purchase order, to make sure you have the money that's set aside to reimburse. We've never run in, since I've been here, run into a problem where teachers overspent their BP money, or the principal said, "We're not going to reimburse that." So I'm not too concerned about it, it's an easy fix. Any questions on the findings? If you turn your page over, now the financial statements. How are we doing on time? This is actually to celebrate, so I actually kind of was smiling and got a little teary-eyed when I wrote this up. But first is Clinton Elementary School. Well, we had an unmodified opinion. That means it's a clean audit. So secondly, page 10 is your Clinton Elementary cash and your fund balance. In 2019, which is this document, we had $35,000 fund balance. 2018, we had $18,000. We had some growth. Now, part of that are my bulleted items. The PTO did dissolve, and they turn over what's in their bank account to the school, so that shows up as revenue or donation. We had other donations, $5,000. The library did really well raising money this year. Now, they're gonna turn around and probably spend it pretty soon, but I know she worked hard. Fees, we did pretty good collecting fees. I think that comes to about $18 a student on average. Fundraising profit margin was exceptional at Clinton. 74% profit margin on the fundraisers. That's how efficiently they're using their time. If teachers and students are using time to raise money, they're 74%. 74 cents of every dollar is going into the school. I think that's amazing. So, this allowed us to spend, or Clinton Elementary, to spend $59,000, or $113 per child, directly on kids. That's over and above what the Board of Ed does. I think that's amazing. And they increased the fund balance by $16,000. I think they have some plans for that in the next year or two. North Clinton, same scenario. They did increase their fund balance. PTO dissolved in prior years, so they didn't get that effect in this year. They did get some donations. Their fundraising gross profit margin was only 41%. And that's not disappointing. I think their fundraising is a little different in scope and purpose than at Clinton, given the socioeconomic status of those kids. I think their fundraising is also incorporated into helping the kids learn and feel good and do different things than it's just what we consider fundraising. Am I close?
I'm primarily at the limits of all.
Yeah.
So I'm not disappointed by that. And they ended up spending about $96 per student on kids out of their internal school fund. South Clinton, their PTO is still functioning. It's a subsequent event, is it did dissolve in the year that we're in now, 2019-20. They had some good donations. Their fundraising gross profit margin was 65%, which is still great. They only spent $83 per child out of their internal school fund, but their PTO also spent some money per child. So it's not really fair to compare South Clinton with Clinton, because one has a PTO and one doesn't. But I still think $83 is exceptional, and then you add to whatever the PTO has done, and I'm sure it's right up there with Clinton. So I think that's something for everybody to be proud of, of what we're doing at the schools. And it would be my recommendation that you approve these audited financial statements.
All right. Do we have any questions or comments for Mr. Ray regarding our internal school funds Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve our school internal funds audit.
So moved.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further questions or comments for Mr. Ray? Hearing none, Kim, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Sharp?
Yes.
Tim Bobble?
Yes.
Joey Smith?
Yes.
Curtis Isbell?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on, we've got our Board of Education audit.
Everybody should have the larger audit document. I've prepared a one-page summary for y'all.
And before he dives into this, can I just share with you the extreme joy when we were at City Council this month, and the auditors brought in the big box with these books? And Scott and I were on the third row, and the auditor gets up to talk about it and has not handed Scott his copy of the book yet. And he was like a kid on Christmas morning. He could not get to that box fast enough to pick up this big book, and immediately, he starts looking at it as if it's the best Christmas present he ever got.
I'm a little odd, I understand, it's okay. Simple pleasures in life. So, this document, let's start looking at the balance sheet. And we never look at the balance sheet. Our monthly report is just our statement of revenues and expenditures. The balance sheet's as important, so let's at least look at it once a year. We are at the very top, and it says "General Purpose School Fund," the second column. We have, you can see our cash position is fairly significant, $4,365,000 plus.
Happy face.
If you look at another big item on our assets due from other governments, there's a footnote seven that's in this document in the back, and the footnotes give further explanation to the balance sheet and the income statement. You can read that over, but what that really represents is taxes that will be collected next year. They're assessed this year, and so they accrue those as kind of a receivable. And then we'll talk more about that when we get into the liabilities. The new item on this year is restricted asset, and you'll see where I've noted TCRS right next to that $21,000. We have a new retirement plan that started in 2014 called the Hybrid Retirement Plan, and part of that plan is the actuarial estimates for how much we're supposed to contribute changes from year to year, but they've set it at a constant rate for us. So right now, we're contributing more than we, the actuarial estimate says we have to. So it's like putting money into a bank account for our employees' pension, and that's an asset. When things turn around and the actuary says, "You should contribute more," and then at that point, we're contributing less, we're gonna pull from this asset to make up that difference. So over time, it should go up and down. And then you'll see that as part of our fund balance. At the bottom is a restricted account. We can't spend that money, because it's not ours to spend as part of the retirement system. Are there any questions on that portion? So you look at your liabilities, and one of the liabilities in there, it says "Deferred Inflows of Resources" right in the middle of the page. It's $2.4 million. The difference between the $2.4 million and that deferred inflow, and the $2.9 million and the asset I talked about earlier, is the current portion that we're recognizing in revenue this year. That being said, the net effect of those is really not material. So you can kind of see, they put an asset on the books, and then they put a liability almost equal to that asset, and the net effect is almost zero. It's more of a record-keeping transaction than anything. It shows bonding companies what our future expected revenue streams is gonna be. That's what part of this balance sheet is good for. Any questions? Fund balance, we had a $51,000 in non-spendable. That's a prepaid item. I prepay insurance, our liability, workers' comp, and our unemployment insurance. I just prepay that before the year-end, and then I book the expense in the subsequent year. And then what you've all been waiting for, if you flip your page over. Fund balance, so if you, third column, where it says "Actual," go to the bottom, and we are at $4.37 million. Now, that should relate. I always say, "You can't spend fund balance, you can only spend cash." Well, if you look at our cash position on the balance sheet side, they're pretty close. So that means we're doing pretty well. I've made some notes on here to kind of describe what some of the line items are. Your capital outlay was pretty significant this year. That's our building improvements plus all the property we bought. I tried to note on there about $230,000 in property. The principal retirement on debt service is the Energy Efficiency Loan Program, EELP, and I've written next to those the maturity dates on those. Down at the bottom, you can see our transfers out. That's sending money to the city to pay for the debt. That's the city's debt, so we're actually transferring money to the city so they can pay that debt. And I've written on there, "School loan number one is the West Wing, and school loan number three is the South Clinton Elementary School." I call it fixing the walls and re-roofing.
Which that one, next year, will be off the books.
I think they agreed to.
Because the city has paid that off.
So, and that was due to expire in '25, so that's pretty significant.
So that one will come off, but then our million-dollar loan for the addition to the city's will come on.
Comes back on. And I look at that as kind of a, almost an increase in maintenance of effort, sort of, because that debt that we incurred at South Clinton didn't improve the building. We didn't add anything to it. We just fixed what was broken. The debt we're taking on is improving Clinton Elementary. We're adding classrooms, we're adding space so we can have more students, which should generate more income, and we use that increase in income to pay for the debt. Any questions on the statement of revenues and expenditures? I guess, oh, I didn't mention the transfers in. It's 607, usually it's 605. That's our maintenance of effort. We get $605,000 every year from the city. It went up because of all the drinking taxes that were collected, and that the city was kind of holding on to because they weren't sure how to disperse that. That lawsuit was settled, and so they could disperse it to us instead of having to give it to the county. And that's the $72,000 noted on there. But I'd be happy to answer any questions. We're not approving these because they're really the city's financial statements, and the school department has been incorporated in them. They've already been approved by the City Council. I just, probably we need to note that we accept them.
So did we need to accept them and not approve them?
We don't approve anything, because it's already been.
Okay, so we just leave it as is then?
Yeah, I mean, we could say we accepted it.
Okay.
If we wanted to have some notion of... And if there's any questions, I could talk for hours on this subject. I know you guys...
I think you've done it.
Enough talking. Thank you for saying it in such a nice way.
You can have us over later.
Okay.
All right, so, any further questions for Mr. Ray regarding our Board of Education audit? It looks great. Looks like we're in a good financial position. I can't say enough to Scott what you do to keep us in line and everything else, so just thank you for all you do and your hard work. We really...
Thank you.
He's good stuff.
All right. Without any further questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to accept the Board of Education audit.
So moved.
Do we have a motion and a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business, we have a five-year strategic plan.
We do. So this is Amplify 2020-25, which is what I'm proposing becomes the school board's next five-year strategic plan. We'll be leaving Vision 2020 behind and moving on to Amplify. We did a first read of this last month, and then Dr. Bobble was not with us, and we wanted to make sure that he had input on this plan as well, so we did the first reading last month, and so it's up for a second reading this month. Just a couple of things. The only thing that I added was under the goal of the facilities, which you will hear in the director's report as well. Our intercom system at South Clinton, just basically, the internal controls were fried, and they died. And if you know, running an elementary school without an intercom is a little problemsome. And so, we were able to fix some components of it, but it's not working as well as it needs to. So we're in the process of doing an emergency replacement on that as we speak. Hopefully, we will have the parts in by the end of February. But with that said, if you recall when we did our last security upgrade, and when they were working with the intercoms, we really, it really shouted out to us how outdated all three of our intercom systems are at all three schools. And so what we did is we're replacing South Clinton this year as an emergency repair, and then I just added that we would pay cash and do a replacement at Clinton Elementary next year, and then North Clinton the following year. And spoke with Scott about which one he felt like, Scott Johnson, which one he felt like we needed to do first, and the Clinton Elementary is significantly older than the North Clinton one. And so we would just do the revolving, a three-year plan to get all three of the intercom systems replaced. So I did place that, which was not on there last week. And then, in talking with KK, do you want to kind of talk a little bit about what you would like to see added?
I would like to see a foreign language implemented in our elementary schools. I just, I think it's very important to me to learn at an early age. If you're gonna learn a second language, to do it at an early age. And, you know, research shows that it helps cognitive skills, social skills, and it also helps you improve in your own language. So, that's one of my visions for...
Amplify.
Amplify 2025. I would like to amplify a second language.
With your all's approval, what I will do is put that under Goal 1, which is academics, so that it's not on there currently, because we just talked about it right before the board meeting, but it will become 1.9, and that would just be to explore and attempt to implement a foreign language program in Clinton Street schools. And certainly, I'm in agreement with her. I think at one point, we were able to offer that in Clinton Street schools, and, you know, the struggle is gonna be finding someone who is qualified to come and do that for us, but we will certainly accept the challenge and look to see what all is out there to try to give our kids that opportunity.
Thank you.
So with that said, everything else was the same as last month, other than those two additions. So any other questions for me regarding this five-year plan?
I don't hear any. So what we have now is to approve Clinton Street Schools Amplify 2025 as amended by Kelly and KK, and this will be on second reading, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. On second reading, do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Motion and a second. Any further questions, comments, or discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll... We'll take a, or all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. I don't know if we needed a roll call on that or not, but I think just a up or down is all we need on that one. All right, moving on, we'll have reports from principals and supervisors.
Okay, so, as you know, Ms. Sharp is on, Ms. Sharp is on medical leave at this point. She's doing well, and we hope that she'll be back with us very soon. Abby Kidwell has stepped up as assistant principal, and she's serving as interim principal right now, but she is currently at Empty Bowls in Clinton Elementary, and so we all left a room crowded, loaded with lots of kids and parents picking up their empty bowls tonight. So there will not be a Clinton Elementary report tonight. And then LeAnn Bonesteal was diagnosed with flu A yesterday, so we have conveniently non-invited her to attend the board meeting today, so there will not be a South Clinton report. So Monica, the floor is all yours today. Come on up.
I'm excited. Woo! We have, we've had a really exciting February this month. On the 5th, we had held some ELA PLCs, and we didn't have a whole lot we were trying to roll out or really, that we had pre-planned to do, so we decided, Ms., our ELA coach and I decided to differentiate for our teachers like we differentiate for our students, and so we gave each teacher the opportunity, depending on what their needs, they could, we could help with a particular lesson or unit, or we could discuss some of the coach walkthroughs, or we could plan or prepare for some writing assessments. So each teacher kind of got to choose what they wanted to do for those this past month. Then on the 11th, we, North Clinton, Jill Smithson and Shannon Cook applied for an Anderson County Commission grant, and they received $494.80. Sixth-grade students have, they wrote a book based on their research of portions of an ancient civilization based on some social study standards. And so they made different chapters, and they've got their table of contents, and so the Anderson County Commission granted them this money so that every student could have their own book published and printed hardbound, and so each student will receive a copy of their book. So that was really, really fantastic, and we're so grateful for that. On the 12th, we had math PLCs, and we discussed some testing updates, and Ready Math, which is from our Curriculum Associates, our Ready program. We had been working on, I think, share-compare routine with K1 and 2, and Marie Dean and I decided that it would be really neat to just kind of introduce that to all of the teachers, and then we have asked them to do one of those routines, and we're gonna come back next month and kind of discuss that and see how that has worked for not just the primary grades, but also the intermediate grades as well. Today, on the 13th, we had our Empty Bowls lunch event. We had never done it as a lunch event before, but it was very successful. Families got to come. We had 45 family members that came and either ate lunch or went down to preview and view the bowls, so they got to take their family member-student, and they got to go down and kind of view the artwork, and if their bowl was reserved, then they got to pick that up and take that home today. And then all of our students, whether it was reserved or not, whether they had a donation for second harvest or not, our fantastically generous board member, Joey Smith, came in... Our fantastically generous, um, board member, Joey Smith, came in today, and he got to view our bowls. And then he made sure that every child next week, if they didn't have one reserved already, will get to take a bowl home from North Clinton Elementary School. So that was just fantastic, and we really appreciate, uh, that very much. I know the students are super excited. We had one come down to pay for a bowl today. And when we told her that, um, someone had taken care of that for her and that she didn't have to pay the five dollars, she was super excited. It was really, she was really, really touched by that. So we really appreciate that for her, uh, as well as all the other students. On the twentieth, we will have our PTCC meeting where we will review our school improvement plan and updates with that. And on the twenty-fifth, we'll have our pre-K parent conferences after school. And on the twenty-eighth, we have, uh, read day with lots of volunteers to come and read and visit with students. So we're gonna, we're gonna really wind it up the end of the month with big bang there. So, thank you.
Great. While she's sitting down, I want to take a minute to brag on the good work that's happening at North Clinton. But, you know, one of the things that we've been focusing on is reducing variability between the three schools. So if a student walks into any of the three schools, they're going to receive the same high-quality instruction and support that they would receive at any of the other two. And so as we were looking at our iReady mid-year data, the iReady data shows us both growth and achievement. And we've talked enough about data to where you know that socioeconomic status status is directly tied to your achievement. And, uh, we just, we see that in our high-poverty schools, that their achievement typically is not as high as your, um, low socioeconomic schools. But with growth, sometimes it's flip-flop, but growth, there is no socioeconomic barrier. And so we've always seen excellent growth from North Clinton. They come in and they take those those students, and they just make miraculous growth out of them. But we've, we've really done, Monica has really honed in on high-quality instruction. I think she's worked hard to get a good team of people up there who believe in high expectations with an abundance of support. And so what they did is they took our three schools and they plotted them on a quadrant, with one quadrant being, um, high-performing and high-growth, which is where you want to be. And then, of course, there was low-performing, low-growth, and all the different. And so all three of our schools, we're proud to say, were in the high-performing, high-growth quadrant, which was where you'd want them to be. And when we looked at the growth, North Clinton was the highest growth, which we would expect it to be because we were closing gaps. But what was so super cool that that gave Dr. Jordan and I just chill bumps as we celebrated in central office, is the achievement dot of North Clinton was within four or five points of Clinton Elementary School. And so when you look at the vast difference of socio- and it wasn't the Clinton Elementary School had dropped, believe me. They had not. Clinton Elementary School's still doing fabulous. But what we are seeing is through her philosophy and through her leadership and through the hard work of the teachers in that building, we are seeing us be able to actually overcome statistics and overcome poverty. And, um, it's just, it's a beautiful, it's a beautiful thing to see. So she's, she's doing good stuff at North Clinton. That concludes all of our principal reports this month. All one of them.
Just take note of a couple of dates that are mentioned in our information, and we'll move on into our director's report.
Okay, so here's a few updates. With regards to Clinton City, some of them Monica has already gone over, so we won't go over every single thing on here. But I want to give you a couple of updates on where we are with our, um, capital projects. Um, M H M, who is the architect firm that we're working with, with our CES addition. Scott has been working diligently with them, and it's intricate work, that is for sure. I've learned quite a bit, and I'm certainly glad that we have Scott's expertise for this. But, um, we're hoping that we will bid that out to a con- uh, to a contractor in the next few weeks. Um, Scott and I have held some conversations, you know, it, the process never moves as quickly as you want it to move. And with the weather and the rain, we've already anticipated that current projects are being pushed behind. And we can only imagine that this is probably going to impact, uh, the projects that we want. And so I don't know how comfortable either one of us feel at this point, saying that that building will be completely done and be ready to move in by the time we open school in August. I think time will tell, we'll know more once we get closer. But we just want to be upfront that we are not sure that it will be done by the opening of the school year, which will probably impact. Uh, you know, Jenna and I will hold conversations about how we want to use that space. But if it's not open on the first day of school, it will probably impact exactly what we do with that next year versus the following year. So we'll certainly keep you updated on that. Um, the Wiggles and Giggles parking lot is currently in the RFP process. Um, Scott has gotten a couple of people who have said they are going to turn in a bid. So as soon as the contractor's awarded, I'll certainly let you know. But we want to move on this project ASAP. Scott has put in the RFP that he would like a completion date of April the first. So we'll see how that goes. We'll see how that goes. But we want to, it's important that we finish the parking lot because part of the construction of the addition is, they're going to have to take out a little bit of the parking lot, the existing parking lot. So we have to have somewhere for the teachers and parents to park. So that that kind of, that domino needs to fall, fall first, so we're hoping we can make that happen. Um, I've told you about the new intercom system at South Clinton, which we hopefully will have in place very soon. Um, tomorrow is a, um, a collaborative day, and so our teachers will be attending. And this is always a fun day for us because it's our annual mini-conference day. And so all staff have signed up. We're offering a variety of different differentiated professional learning opportunities for our teachers. And so they actually had a catalog of, um, presentations and, uh, sessions that were going to occur. And they got to sign up for the three that they felt like would best meet their professional needs. And so that is happening tomorrow, and that is always one of our favorite days at Clinton, uh, at Clinton City Schools. Um, I do want to let you know where we are with regards to our, um, school closing and our inclement weather days. So, um, we have closed a little bit more than I have wanted it to close in the past few weeks. That's always my most unfavorite thing to do. But, um, we do have thirteen stockpile days. And so just if you get questions asked, I know there's been lots of discussion in a variety of systems over this on social media for the past, for the past, uh, week or so. But our students go to school thirty minutes extra each day. And so teachers are actually instructing students thirty extra minutes a day versus what the state requires. And so over the course of the year, that's how we get the thirteen extra days. Districts can choose if they want to use all those thirteen days for inclement weather or sick days, or we have the ability to use three of them for professional development days. And typically, we don't have to close over ten days in Clinton City Schools, and I'm going to knock on wood when I say that. But, um, but, um, so we do three professional development days and ten inclement weather days. And, um, so we have used, um, six of those at this point. And so we have four left of our ten days to see us through, which I am just fairly confident that we're going to be okay. But, um, it's always a tough decision to call out. But I will tell you that on Thursday, when we did attend and Anderson County was in, you know, the the weather was fine in the morning, and as the day went on, the the flood, the floods became worse. And we did, several of our teachers were heavily impacted in their ability to get home. And I felt like that we, we put them in a situation that I wasn't comfortable with. So that's one of the reasons that we chose to close this week, was just out of an abundance of caution, making sure we keep our people safe. Um, the annual staff and student ballgame is going to be Tuesday, February twenty-fifth. And last I heard, our own Joey Smith is going to be playing basketball. Our own Scott Ray will be playing basketball. And, uh, I don't know, Curtis, you're not out the door yet. I might be hitting you up after, uh, and KK, there's girls playing too. So we may, we we, we may have a few more additions on here, but that's always a fun game. It's going to be at six o'clock, and that's always just a fun night. Um, as you know, Empty Bowls has happened today. All three schools held it today, so South Clinton and Clinton Elementary are still in the process of that being held now. Um, wanted to congratulate, uh, six Clinton City Schools teachers who were awarded the Education Foundation Health and Wellness Grants this year. Um, Laura Roberts, Terry Curley, Amanda Patterson, Leslie Tumblin, Lynn Neal, and Lindsey Duggan all won, uh, one of the grants. And so we won over four thousand dollars, um, in grants for health and wellness. And when, I think they gave out maybe, was it nine thousand is what they gave out, eight or nine thousand? We got almost half, half of the grants, a little less than half of the grants. So Clinton City Schools fared very, very well, um, in that, and we're certainly proud. Um, and then Monica told you, no, she didn't tell you this one. Um, the Clinton Rotary Club, the Daddy Daughter Dance that went on Saturday night, that was such a successful event. Um, I was pleasantly surprised when I went to Rotary on Tuesday night that they called us up, and they took a portion of those proceeds, and they donated two hundred dollars to each one of our libraries. And so each one of our libraries received a two-hundred-dollar check from Clinton Rotary. And so we certainly appreciate them continuing to support literacy. And then finally, we've told you about the books. And so I do want to go over real quickly before the end of my report. We have made some changes in the transfer and zone exception. Now, these are not policies, so it doesn't need school board approval, but it's a procedure. And while we don't bring every procedure to you, just because this is kind of a big deal, I wanted to, I wanted to bring it to your attention just because you may be answering some community questions about the changes that we made. Um, we made these changes just because we don't really know where the new, uh, we're building several new subdivisions in South Clinton. We've got some speculation of an, possible annexation. We just don't know what's going to happen in our enrollment in the next few years. And so we have two different kinds of, I guess, technically, transfers. We have, um, out-of-city transfers is what we call them. And then we do something called a zone exception. And that would be, for instance, if I am zoned for Clinton Elementary, but it's more convenient for me to go to South Clinton for some reason, then I can apply for a zone exception and go to another zone school, even though I'm a city resident. And so, um, the transfers within system, that is your zone exception. The change that we have made here is that in the past, every single year when we send out registration forms, we have made city parents, if they are on a zone exception, we have made them fill out the pink form and send it in and wait to hear if they have been approved or not. And that approval usually comes in July. I can't think of a time that I have been here, or that Jamie, I don't, I don't think you can either, that we have ever denied an existing zone exception unless it falls under the criteria here, that behavior, attendance, parent supportive philosophy. But it's never been a lack of space, once we have made space for them in that school. And so to have to inconvenience the parent to fill out that form every year and then wonder if they're going to get it and not know if they're going to get it until the summer, and then we're mailing out an abundance of letters, it just kind of seems redundant when, when those systems, once you have been approved for a zone exception, it is good to the terminating year unless one of these criteria happen. And then we're just dealing with a few isolated events that that rarely happen. And so we made that change this year to say that once you, or you're, if you're a city resident, once your zone exception is approved, that is good through the terminating year unless you don't meet one of those bulleted criteria, and we would inform you prior to. And then that's just one less piece of paperwork that our city residents have to fill out. So we thought that was in the best interest of parents. And then on our attendance of non-resident students, um, this is our out-of-city transfer students. And in the past, we have set one date, usually around April fifteenth, and that's when the transfer period begins. But we really have never had a clear-cut ending date. And so where we found in just the past couple of years, many parents have become frustrated because they come at the beginning of August and they want to transfer. And I'm looking at numbers, and I need to reserve some spots for city kids, and I don't know if I can take them at that point. And it just creates a very hostile, a hostile situation because the parents panicked. I don't know what to do. I don't know if we can take them because I need to see the whites of eyeballs to see, you know, if there's room for a transfer student, because our priority hot has to always be on city kids. And so what we have done is we have created what most districts do, which is an actual window. And we're, right now, we're keeping that window fairly large. And then once we see these developments, we're inevitably probably going to have to lower the amount of transfers that we take if if we see more city residents come in. So we're doing it from April fifteenth through July fifteenth this year, and that will be the official window. And so then after July fifteenth, if anybody comes from out of county and wants to do a transfer, they can fill out a transfer form, and we'll put them on a waiting list. We will see, um, how the city students play out, and if we feel like that we've got room and can accommodate space and programming, and their behavior and attendance is superb, then at that point, we would accept them if able. But we would put them on a waiting list to make sure we're taking care of our city kids first. And so we're going to start with this timeframe. If we do grow, I anticipate we might need to shorten that timeframe in the future. But I felt since we had never had a timeframe before, this kind of gave a fair, a a fair opportunity for people to fill out transfers. So any questions on that or any concerns that you can see? So those are, those are the two new procedures that are updated. And with that, if you all don't have any questions for me, that concludes my director's report, with the exception of, I do have a card I want to read from our dear Kim Martin. Our school board has certainly been hit in all kinds of directions with with lots of family sadness this past year. Um, and as you know, Kim, Kim Martin's mother passed away suddenly in a tragic car accident just a few weeks ago. And to say her world has been rocked is an understatement. And she just is a trooper, and she is near and dear to central office. I tell her every single day that I could not function without her. She keeps, she keeps my head on straight and keeps me moving in the right direction. But she did, on behalf of the school board, um, we presented her with a wooden, um, lantern, um, in memory of, that 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 lights up, and it was just beautiful. So she wrote a thank-you note. Dear school board, I just wanted to thank each one of you guys for your thoughts and prayers during this difficult time in my life. Thank you for the beautiful lantern. It has been a constant light in my heart. Please join my family for a celebration of life to honor my mom on Saturday, March twenty-first, twenty-twenty, from two to four, at the Museum of Appalachia. I hope you can come. Love, Kim Martin. And so I'll put this date and time in an email to you, since I just read it to you verbally. But, um, I wanted to make sure that I read you that from our dear friend, Kim. And that concludes my report.
Any further comments, questions, anything at all? All right, hearing none, I'll declare this meeting adjourned.